Pledge of Aegis.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we call the meeting in order at six o'clock. Your agenda is set, we'll move into presentations, and I think Lynn is gonna start us. There she's got me.
Hi. So, this is part of my food pantry group that was created just probably over a year ago. We kinda wanted to walk alongside the United Way, looking at the things that go home on Fridays in the backpack program. We felt like what they provided was good, but we could provide more and better. So, we got with the principal and said, "Hey." She said, "Hey, I'm kinda already doing it on my own." And we got with friends and other faculty and said, "Hey." And they said, "Okay." And now, for the first six months, we all provided the food to the food pantry.
And there's a couple members missing.
Yes, there is.
They weren't able to attend tonight.
Yes, so we have Candace George, Melissa Desmois, Lynn Gayler, Susan Zelik. Our missing members are Bridgette Campbell, Kendra Lamb, and Susie Jarrett.
Katie Zimmerman.
Katie Zimmerman. So together, we have created this food pantry that provides for fourteen of our school families. And that's kinda how we got started. We saw a need, we kinda got together. Because we are a small community, that's what we do. And a year later, we don't buy the food, the food is provided. We try to make it healthier. Frozen vegetables, as per ramen noodles. I hate ramen noodles. And pork, ham, chicken, I mean, everything's fresh. And fresh produce, apples, oranges, grapes, and that's our goal. It's not only to put food in these kids' bellies, but to put healthy food in these kids' bellies.
Oh, we have a clicker.
Okay.
Fascinating, we can use a clicker. So, how we kinda got started? Something I was always kinda seeing, and I know that JC has had conversations with me, when kids are in trouble, one of the first things that kinda comes out of it when they're angry was they were hungry. And so, making sure that their basic needs were met, so they have that educational mindset and ready to go. We also have forty-four families that participate in the backpack program that Sue has alluded to through the United Way. And that is a bag of food that goes home on a Friday. And we do have, I think there's ten middle, middle high school students that participate with us as well.
So, alongside of us buying the food in the beginning, we reached out to local businesses. The Dollar General did a food drive for probably three months and kept us well-stocked. We've put bins in businesses like the bank, Oak Grill, the Carrieville, the library. We really reached out to a lot of businesses and community members and just, we didn't ask for money, we were just asking for their help, just their assistance. And that's kinda how we started to not have to financially support the food pantry. And we also have worked with the 7-Eleven who's done some change drives for us. I just collected three hundred dollars the other day.
A great money for us.
Which helps us to buy more through Food Link. We've worked with local churches. North Gate in Batavia has done several food drives for us. I think the Brick Church last year provided us with a box full of school supplies. So, it's, it kind of even goes more than just filling their bellies, but helping them, you know, financially with school supplies. And it's just, we're just trying to partner, Bondewell, we've partnered with Bondewell. They, I have to go present in front of them next week because they wanna do another food drive for us. They started a community garden, asked us to head it. So, over the summer, we could provide our families with fresh tomatoes, fresh peppers. And next year, we're hoping to provide more. We just gotta get our green thumbs on us.
We also worked with, like, the VFWs and the Veterans Associations have helped out with food boxes during the holidays time as well. So, when we finally found Food Link, we did some researching. One of the things that Sue has talked about was that balance, that healthy food option in providing meat and milk. And those two areas of need, you'd be really surprised at how excited they are to have a gallon of milk or milk vouchers that we're able to provide for them. So it just, it warms your heart. And I know you wanted to talk about the little.
Yeah, this summer, we were awarded a grant through Food Link that, we were awarded two hundred dollars. And we partnered with a local farm in Albián, we partnered with Panic's Produce Farm. And we were able to provide grapes, peaches, apples, cherries, any of their fresh produce that they had available, they were able to give it to us to supply for the milk pantry. It was an awesome partnership, they even donated some out of the generosity of their hearts too. So it was a really great partnership for them.
And another note on the grants, we also, last year, went through Food Link and got a grant to get a freezer and a refrigerator so that we could produce or provide fresh produce and milk and all of that. Every quarter, we were eligible for a grant, and I think we get like two hundred and fifty-seven dollars every quarter to spend through Food Link.
So the way it kinda works, we're open, we say open twice a month, and we let them shop, and by shop, they just come with their bags and they take what they want. And that's something that's unique to our school pantry, that Food Link has identified with us, that our families can come in and they take what they like and what they want and what their families are going to need and eat. We were having some families that needed delivery, that's kinda tapered off, but that can ebb and flow as new families move in. And we also have students that will come down to the office and ask specifically to do some shopping in my secret room, they call it, so it's kind of fun. So, these are just some quotes that I will let you read to yourself. When I asked food pantry members through our Mind app, you know, what do you like about this program, what's helpful, these are some of the quotes that they sent back to us. So one of the things that we wanted to say from our group to the school is thank you for providing the room for us to be able to house the food pantry within the school setting and being able to open the doors to our families on after-school and in weekends, we really appreciate it. So, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, where is it actually in the school?
It's off the side of the stage. Is a closet that was more storage and we asked Jordan to clean it out, and he was happy to do so.
And then how do you qualify, it seems like there's a distinction between the fifteen families or the fourteen families and the forty-four. So the fifteen families, they have access to that twice a month?
Yes.
And then how do you qualify to be one of those fifteen families?
So we invite families to participate. The one reason I think that it deters them sometimes is they have to come to the school. And so sometimes they want that anonymous delivery, which is why we're delivering. I have a family that I deliver to for some various circumstances and privacy things. So just trying to get them to come in and accept the help has been something that's been a little bit of a hurdle for us.
So is the school, like, so do they do an application, or do we?
No.
Like, we just determine somehow or another that they're qualified?
It goes by word of mouth. So Sue had some families at football that where they were talking to her about a neighbor said something about this. And so it's, sometimes it's some of our neighbors, some new students that are coming to the district. I have a family that the mom is gonna be out for a medical reason, she's having some surgery, and so she has approached to say, "Can I just have some services to offset for the next couple weeks?" So, they do kind of ebb and flow in and out.
Last year, when we started though, we, didn't we send out applications to all of the backpack participants?
We sent.
If they would want to participate.
Yeah, it's not really an application, but we don't deny anybody, but yes.
Just a voluntary, we sent out to the backpack participants and said, "We're starting this food pantry up, would any of you be interested in participating in this? You'd have to come to school." We kind of gave them the details, and then they said, "Yes, I'd like to accept this," or "No, I do not want to participate."
Then it, how does it carry over throughout the summer? Does it kinda stop and it's, it goes right through the summer as well?
Yeah, we open in the summer months as well.
Cool.
Yeah, we have no criteria. Like, if somebody came to us and, you know, even if they are living in the biggest house in Oakfield and they say, "I can't do it."
So I can stop, I can stop.
Sure. Bring the girls.
If they say, "I'm in need," we say, "Here you go, help yourself." You know, because I think sometimes, you know, and it's funny because the first time I did a delivery, I really had to swallow hard because on the front porch are two huge bags of pop bottles. I'm like, "Really, you can't buy your kid milk?" But pop is so much cheaper than milk, and you get snacks for less than you pay for a gallon of milk. You know, and so it's, I think some people, they just, you know, they buy, I hate to use the word junk, because of the price, you know?
Well, we also had talked about, you know, the Dollar General has been a nice area for people, you know, I go, I'm guilty of like, we ran out of milk or whatever. But when you go, it's all frozen processed. And so that's one of the things for us that's really hitting our hearts, is that we need to provide opportunities for fresh and frozen and kinda get away from that real heavy processed. And every program we ever looked into at the beginning to say, "How can we offer assistance? How can we get them up on their own feet?" It's also heavily processed, so.
You said Bondewell, now is, did they, did they start those gardens?
Yes.
Is that the end of Stevens and Weber?
Yeah.
And then those raised beds back there?
They donated all the supplies and seeds and just kinda said, "Make it grow."
They put water back there.
So that's when Sue's.
Did the beds, put the soil in, got the plants.
Yeah, that's a pretty big site there.
Yeah, it's great. Next year, when we know what we're doing with it, it'll be beautiful. Right, we just need some farmers on our team.
Any other questions or comments?
How could you volunteer? If somebody wanted to volunteer with you guys?
Come see one of us, we'll pitch you work.
Are there any requirements as far as donations go? Like, somebody wants to donate meat or something like that?
The meat part gets a little interesting because Food Link does have us under some restraints, you know, we've had some families that say, "I've got some medicine, can I..." We just have to make sure it's processed, you know, in appropriate. Correct, yeah. Yeah, so not in your garage, but, yes, so we do take donations as well.
Awesome, thank you for the work.
Thank you so much, Sue.
Appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you.
Hello, my name is Raita Gett, and I am a junior.
My name is Maggie Damar, and I'm a senior. We are here representing the OA High School Music Department, and would like to present a music trip to Cleveland, Ohio. Our itinerary has been prepared by Jeff Aetho and the First Choice Travel. The dates we would like to travel are Saturday, May 2nd till Sunday, May 3rd, 2020. Including, included in this trip will be sites of Cleveland, like the Museum of National History and Zoo, but it will also include two performances, one at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and crossing fingers the national anthem at the Cleveland Indians game.
The high school band and chorus previously traveled to Philadelphia in 2016 and Boston in 2018, and both trips were wonderful opportunities to learn, explore, and perform. I personally had the opportunity to attend the Boston field trip in 2018 as a freshman, and not only did it help to expand our horizons, but it helped us to grow as a group. And it provided us with experience performing and receiving feedback from those outside of the community. And on top of that, we aren't just traveling with our class, but four grades of student musicians. The trips have been fabulous ways to grow together and share memories with the students in different grade levels in the past, so.
Oh, you have itineraries, I think this is sort of the third iteration of them, but the cost of the trip is three hundred and fifteen dollars. Music boosters would like to offset that cost for each traveling student. That number of assistance that we've been able to give them has varied between fifty and seventy-five dollars over the last couple trips that we've done. So hopefully, we're looking at something more in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty dollars per student with music booster's help. That'll be determined by how much fundraising we do and how many travelers we end up with. But we're selling coffee right now as our current fundraiser, so it makes, they make great gifts, you know, around holiday time, so we still got a little time on that one, and we'll have a few more in the spring as well. So, thank you for, you know, considering our trip, and thanks for your service to the community and to the school.
Sounds like fun, any questions? Where do you wanna go most? Where is the place you want us to see?
I'm really looking forward to performing at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. I just think it's wonderful.
One of the things on the itinerary that's fairly new, I guess, is we'll have to do an audition, like an audition video, very motivating. So we'll get that ready a couple months ahead of time, submit it and everything, and that'll be a big deal for us, you know, we'll kinda stage the actual program that we'll be writing from, and they'll, they'll be revved up for that, so that's an added bonus for us.
You have questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great.
I don't know how the new girl gets like two presentations in the first three months she's been here, but it's been. Hold the short end of the straw, again. So, today I just wanted to briefly talk to you about where our students are with testing over the last year or so, and where we're going moving forth with our curriculum to try to raise our student achievement levels. So the first couple of slides, you'll see that I have kind of a color code there. So, green, and I'll explain when we get to the first one, means all our kids were above, or our percentage was above the state scores, and it was also above GVEP region. And orange is above state or GVEP, so we made it above one of them. And if it was red, we're above below, or we're below both. So, third grade last year, so this is last year, so it would be this year's fourth graders. In ELA, we had fifty-four percent of our students proficient and proficient, they consider a level three or a four, so if they scored a three or a four. And that, you can see it's above the GVEP region and just above the state region. In math, we had sixty-five percent proficiency, again, we were above both GVEP and state region for that. One thing just to note about state, when they do the state scores, that includes New York City and all the big five cities. So, that's not always as comparable for us, so that's why I wanted to put the GVEP region in as well. Fourth grade, so that would be this year's fifth graders. Our proficiency was forty-six percent in ELA, so we were below the state, but we were above our region. Math, we were below both state and region, we had about forty-three percent proficiency. Grade five, this year's sixth graders, they were above in both ELA and math at forty-two percent and fifty percent respectively. Sixth grade, again, we are above, we had great scores here, sixty-seven percent proficiency in ELA, sixty-nine in math, again, you can see significantly above both the state and the region, so that's this year's seventh graders. Grade seven, so this year's eighth graders, in ELA, we're at forty-one percent, so just above the state, but quite a bit above GVEP region. And math, we were right at the GVEP forty-one percent proficiency and a little bit below the state. Eighth grade, so this is this year's freshmen. Our eighth graders had thirty percent proficiency for ELA and thirty-one percent proficiency for math. And you'll notice on both of those, we are quite a bit below both the region and the state with those scores. So that's our ninth graders this year who've just started high school. This year, so all of these scores that we're looking at next year, we're not gonna be able to compare them, because this is the last year they have the Common Core exam, so starting next spring, we will have, actually, so this will be the last year, starting next spring, we will have the new next-gen standards, so all our exams will be aligned with that. And we'll talk about what we're doing as a district to help students and staff get ready for that. Science, up until or through this year, the state offers a fourth grade science exam and an eighth grade science exam, it's based on the Math, Science, Technology Standards. Our fourth graders rocked it, ninety-eight percent proficiency, and our eighth graders rocked it, they had seventy-three percent. Both above the GVEP region, I could not find the state scores for that, so that's why that piece is absent. But important thing to note here, just like the ELA and math exams are changing, science exams are changing. So this June is the last time that the fourth grade science assessment is gonna be offered with the MST standards. Next June, no science exam at fourth grade, fifth grade, any grade in the lower elementary. The following June, so June of 2022, it's gonna be the first administration of the next-gen aligned science five exam. So, elementary science exam is moving from grade four to grade five, at the same time, we're moving from MST standards to next-generation standards. So that's kind of happening at the same time.
Kinda, do you hear if there's a lab that's associated with that for the fourth grade one? Cause I can't find that.
I, you don't, no, one of the things, I was talking to, actually, our fifth grade teacher who concentrates on social studies and science after school today, and that's one of the things the state has lagged a little bit with is guidance. We have all these new standards, across the board, we have standards, but the guidance for these new assessments is really lagging. Our social studies, which you'll see in a minute, which we already started, the first exam was offered in global, and we're transitioning, so we still can offer the old exam, and our next one is gonna be US history. We just got the guidance for the US history exam, and it's gonna be offered this June, like.
So it's anybody's guess?
Yeah, so that these aren't being offered until 2022.
Right.
We probably won't see guidance until 2021, is my guess. But our teachers are asking the same questions.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I am one of those dumb teachers that just, I'd love to know.
Yeah, well, we'd like to be in a program. So that's our elementary and where we're going with that. New ELA in math, starting next June. New fourth, or new fifth grade science, we eliminate fourth in 2022, and also new eighth grade in 2022. So we're gonna move on to our high school and regions. I only pulled a couple of the regions out, the reason being, our students don't need all of the regions exams to graduate. So what our students need is their ELA, and they need their algebra, they need global and US history, and then they need one regions exam in science, which traditionally for kids is either living environment or science. Now you're gonna see I have all sorts of crazy numbers next to these, and I listed global first. So global, this past June, had its first, what they call, transition exam. So they're transitioning from Common Core to next-generation standards, which it's called a framework in social studies. So in June, was that first transition exam, students could take the old one, or they could take the transition, it was totally up to the school, okay? You'll see to the left of that says eight-twenty, so in August of twenty, that will be the first time that only the new framework exam, so only the new global exam with new standards is offered. So from eight-twenty on, that's the only option we have for our global. US history follows right behind, so this coming June is the first offering of the new US history regions. Again, that's aligned to their new standards, the new framework. Students still can take the old exam, so again, the district can decide which as they transition their kids over. Starting August of twenty-one, only the new framework exam will be offered for US history. So those are the two first coming down, and like I said, Justin, like, the guidance for US history just recently came out. So they really are waiting to the last minute with this stuff.
So it almost be who must wait?
Well, we've got the standards.
Right.
Which is the really good part. So our teachers, and we'll talk about what we're doing with that to start getting them familiar with that piece of it, but the actual test guidance is what is kinda slow coming through for the state. Algebra, you'll see, that's kinda next, coming down the pike. June of 2022 is the first time they'll offer that transition exam, so you can take the old or the new. Starting in August of twenty-three, all that will be offered is the new next-gen standards for algebra, Common Core will go out of the wayside. Living environment, we don't have any transition dates for living environment or ELA. So far, the only guidance on those says, "Okay, starting June twenty-three, we have a brand-new living environment, and we have a brand-new earth science, which actually will be earth and space science." It's like a really interesting new shift there. ELA is the last one to come at us, and that's gonna be in June of twenty-four. Common Core is gone, next-gen standards have come in. So, right now, when we look at these numbers, in five years, we, we're not gonna be able to compare back five years, cause exams are gonna be absolutely different. Do I know what we're up against yet? No, I don't. We're gonna find out really soon, though. So how does this relate to us? Well, graduation rates, again, this may be very different next year. So if you look at our trend from 2016 to 2018, Genesee County, eighty-eight, ninety-one, ninety, we were eighty-one, seventy-six, seventy-eight, not real strong. New York State was even at eighty percent, but again, that's New York City and all our big cities included. This past year, you'll notice I have X's under there, there's no state reported yet, none of this stuff has come back from the state. The way we've figured, our scores were at ninety-four percent graduation, which is phenomenal. That, like I'm sure you know, depends on your cohort of kids. As we transition in with these new exams, we don't know what's gonna happen. Our elementary, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't have that guidance yet, you're talking about that, it's a year from June. So these scores, they could go way up, they could go way down. So in my mind, it's gonna be a couple of years before we can really say how things are going, because there are so many shifts.
So the state outperformed the region in the third through eighth testing scores, but then at graduation rates, it underperforms the region, that kinda flips the other direction?
And I think, you know, schools I've been in this district, Matt, that kind of is a trend. I don't know why, but it seems to be.
Get the kids to graduation, the region gets, get the kids to graduation, okay, but their testing scores third through eighth lag.
Well, the third through eight, remember, that was all that Common Core that came heavy and came hard. And there was a lot of resistance, there was a lot of opt-out, sometimes our better students were opting out, and so now the cohort of kids we have taking the exam might not be some of those kids that might have scored those higher scores. You don't get that opt-out at the regions exam level. Like, you take it and you pass, so you can graduate, or you take it and you don't pass, and you either take it again, or unfortunately, sometimes you don't graduate. So there's a little bit different with population with who's taking the test, I think. So what are we doing with all this? All these new scores, all these new exams coming down the pipe? What we are doing to help everybody transition is partnering with GVEP, so GBBOCS, to build guaranteed and viable curriculums that align with the next-gen learning standards, every grade level and every class taught. So what does this look like? New York State has something that they call their roadmap, like your roadmap to the new standards, your roadmap to the new exam. The first step of the roadmap is raising awareness, so this year, that's something we've already tackled. Some of our teachers who've participated in GBBOCS cohorts for their content areas have done this already last year, they've started this work, but as a district, everybody started this work this year. So what that meant is, I provided grade-level content and specific next-gen standard resources to the curriculum teams. Along with the building-level administrators, we provided some guided collaborative work time to just explore the new standards and crosswalks. We did a little bit of I notice, I wonder protocol. Basically, that was for people to say, "Okay, this is what it looks like, these are the shifts, I might have some questions, I might not." That happened early in the year, we've already done that, we've already moved to the building capacity phase. Building capacity is starting to really get your hands into the standards and figure out what you're gonna do with them. So GVEP facilitated, this actually happened this past Friday, a district-wide curriculum building kickoff event. Our main purpose for this is to get everybody, the guidance and support as we work to prioritize these standards. So now everybody's on the same page. So last year, some people were going to GVEP, they were a little bit further ahead, other people hadn't tackled it yet, so we were kind of all in different places. Friday, GVEP helped us all get together on the same page. So curriculum teams are gonna start building that shared understanding of what we want our students to know and be able to do by the end of their grade level or course. Our goal for the end of this year is for every teacher to have a scope and sequence built for at least one subject. And as I say, one, one subject per teacher's not gonna get everything done. In reality, we cannot expect our teachers, we have some teachers that have four or five preps, it's not realistic to expect them to do that much in a year. So what we've done is build curriculum teams. Elementary, we looked at what are these priorities that they need. Secondary, I said, "What do you need to graduate?" "Well, we need algebra." "Okay, algebra, you know, that one math teacher's gotta work on the algebra." "Okay, we need US history and global to graduate." "Okay, gotta work on those." "We need ELA to graduate." "Okay, gotta work on that." So we kind of worked backwards, what do our kids need to graduate? So that's how we prioritize what standards and what curriculum that was gonna be worked on. Moving forward, we're gonna continue to build capacity, we're gonna continue to partner with GVEP and do work with them, help build the capacity of both our teams and our students. We'll continue that guidance work, we're gonna develop common assessments, then we move into implementation phase. And you saw even from the regions and talking about the elementary, ELA and math and the science, the implementation is all across the board when this is happening, between now, actually, it started last year, all the way to 2024, this implementation phase happens. So the rate at which we're enrolling this is gonna vary. Some of our. Some of our teachers, like I said, have done a lot of work. Our social studies team in particular, I give them a lot of credit, they spent a lot of time working with GVEP last year. They shared with me this past Friday the work that they've done. They've done a lot of the heavy lifting already, so they're in really good shape to finish building out their curriculum to be ready for these exams that are happening for them this year and next year. Some of our teachers haven't done any of that yet and that's totally okay also because we have some exams that aren't coming down the pipeline for another, you know, four or five years. So we're starting that work with them. But ultimately, where we want Oakfield to be is having a guaranteed and viable curriculum for every grade level and every class. That's where we're hoping to go.
That's it, right?
Yeah, that's it, just a little, just a little, yeah. And they all really love me right now, I have to tell you, yeah. Does anybody have any thoughts, concerns, questions? I'm waiting for you, Josh, you always have questions.
I do, I do, there's, there's, it seems like there's a lot of resources in the elementary school.
Yep.
And I think sometimes when there's a lot of resources, it's hard to be consistent with the use of those resources. Has there been any look into perhaps programs that exist out there so that we can be consistent in that? What kindergarten and pre-pay and first grade are doing and week five looks similar, but it's just spiraling, it's consistent. So what are you, what are you doing with program work right now?
I love that question. So right now, Lynn and I are working on a spreadsheet, first off, so we can figure out what teachers have, because I'm brand new to this position. What do we have that teachers are utilizing, what's working for them, what isn't working for them? So that's number one, we got to see what is out there. The vertical alignment that you're talking about, in all this curriculum work, it's not just elementary, vertical alignment is occurring. That's part of the, what we want to do is we want to guarantee that all second graders, that's that guaranteed part, are learning that same content. The instructional piece might vary because teachers in art.
It is, and I, but I, yeah, and I agree, and I don't want to see islands.
Right.
I want to see everybody kind of doing that same thing, but with their own personality.
So yeah, we definitely are looking into that. Another piece, once we get the spreadsheet and we see what we have to look at, one of the things I want to do is start vetting it out. And what is shown to be proven and reliable, what isn't?
What about looking at maybe other school districts and seeing what programs they're using currently?
Absolutely, Friday, I have the first curriculum council of the year, which is at GBBOCSY. So any of our 22 districts, they send their people in curriculum positions. And we work with GVEP, who goes to the state to get the most current information, but then I have this network of people where I say, hey, this is where we're struggling. Or, hey, I need a resource for this, and it's just a give and take back and forth. And our region is really phenomenal with sharing with each other. So that's definitely something. You know, looking at other districts in the region, who's got really great scores?
It's where you want to go.
Exactly, absolutely. So yeah, that's all on the radar, those are great questions. And I'll keep you guys posted as we go along, it's, you know, a work in progress for sure. Anything else?
Thanks, guys.
Great, thanks.
On the capital project. So the first couple of slides are just reminder slides of what we started with, the VCS. And what we want to really talk to you today about is where we've come to, where are we at, and then what's going to be going on here next. So, once the VCS was created, we came out here, brought our teams out, brought together all this information, then you've got this big pile of information, tons of data. Then we have to sort through it. So what we've come to at this point is kind of a preliminary summary of everything that we've gathered. We've worked with the administrative team, a few of the other specialty program areas to talk about their needs. And not only just the assessment of the VCS items, but also about program and where we think we want to go in the future to try to get an early look. From that early look, now we're going to start looking at a facility committee group that we're going to break together. And from that group, we're going to look at the needs and where we are and start crafting and coming up with a roadmap of where we want to go. And then what, out of that group, we would hope to come back with a recommendation. So that you have a collaborative come together with community people, administrative staffs, the special program and interest groups. So we have a unified front to come back and say, here's. Some of the things that we've already done, we've done some interviews, there's more to go on. We've done the investigative work, all that's been brought together and gathered. Built the list, gone through them. We've done, at this point, what we've done is worked with Jordan's team to go through and prioritize everything. One, two, three, four, five, number ones are obviously our hot priorities, these are the things that we have to do, we can't wait, we have to get going on. We've developed some preliminary schemes, you're going to see some things in here today that are very preliminary. There are things to come together to try to get numbers, to try to assess where the needs are. We look at scoping areas, so you see floor plans evaluating how much area of the building we're going to touch. You're going to see a site plan that's very preliminary, but we, we need to start doing some of this so that we at least have an idea of where things can go and how much. And how much, not only the scope that would be done, but also the cost impact on that across the whole project. None of this is locked in at this point, this is just early preliminary starting points. Now, as we get together in these, these committee groups, we'll start crafting and getting into more detail and continue to move down through that process. These slides here are just some images of things, areas of need, things that we're going to be working on, things that we picked up and looked at as we were going through the facilities. Don't identify anything anymore. I think my sleeve is catching up there. One of the big items that we've talked about is the windows, the face of this building, we're going to talk about that down here. You see some of the bleachers that are broken, some masonry restoration that's needed, some work in the insides. Well, this doesn't like me today. You see, you know, there's mechanical equipment, you also see the broken sill on that one. Mill work that's outdated, not meeting the needs of the space or has some deterioration. You'll see the Lynn's favorite glass block. And then at this one here is the bus garage, there's a number of items in the, in the bus garage that we want to look at. There was some work done there in the last piece, mostly with the roof, but there's still a lot of things that we need to take care of and fix. See a sink that's no longer there and some deterioration on the outside with windows and things like that.
So this slide is showing, as Rich mentioned, where we are today with our net that we've cast. With buildings, meeting with faculty, administration and all of our tours. And the list stands right now, the total list, at about twenty-eight point five million dollars. What we did with Jordan a few weeks ago is we sat down and we tried to look at what the priority ones were in our mind in terms of what we heard from everybody so far, and it's our look at from listening to everybody and talking to Jordan about infrastructure needs and what some of the safety concerns are. And right now, as Rich said, it's not, nothing's locked in, but our priority ones as we see it are around fifteen point three million. So we were able to come down quite a bit, which is good. Can't do the, we don't think we can do the whole project. And from here, we need to massage that fifteen point three, see what makes sense for a size of project. And also what things we need to consider that we haven't considered yet by opening up to some larger groups.
So tonight, tonight you receive the list of each one of those items. They are prioritized by building across the district. These are just kind of broad descriptions of each one of these areas. To come up with these scope items, a lot of the things that we did was try to parallel facilities needs with program needs. We don't want to go into an area, I think I've talked about this in the past, we don't want to go into an area twice, we want to get the work done once. So a lot of our discussions working with Jordan was how do we, how do we double dip? How do we go into an area once and make sure that we're getting all the work done? So that's where we started grouping these items together and trying to come up with scope of work that are small projects that make sense. So there's a whole lot more detail that goes into each one of these items. And if anybody wants to see it and go through it, you know, we'd love to sit and spend the time and go through each one of the line items. But there is a lot more information that goes into each one of those. And again, this is a starting point. We have to start somewhere and when we sit down with the whole committee, you know, there's certain things that from the facility, they're not things that we have to do. You know, these are things that we're going to have to do, so how do we parallel them, how do we work forward and take care of it? So that's where Jordan and the rest of the administrative team has really put a lot of effort and time into it so far. But now we really need to move to the next steps.
So it doesn't seem like there's a lot of discretionary opportunity to do more. So we've, we're targeting ten to seventeen million and fifteen million is what we've identified as priority one.
Well, the, the, so let me, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't, so in this priority one, we've included major program improvements that the administrative team has already identified as things that would really like to help. So that's where there's some flex. You know, there's some things that we're going to talk about here, we're going to go through a few areas in the building where we've made some significant changes or included that in the scope at this point. So it's not just nuts and bolts. Because we're doing the nuts and bolts, we're also going to have the opportunity to do an improvement to this area and make these renovations. So there's, there's both. I think that this fifteen million plus or minus number is a good blend and you're going to see that it does touch significant areas and has great opportunity for not just fixing what's above the ceiling, but also creating some really nice spaces. It's not to say that's where we're going to be when we finalize this committee and come back, but it's a good starting point and it's things that we can kind of talk through and evolve, so.
This slide is just showing you kind of how we took priority ones. What, what are some of the criteria that we applied to each of these? You know, there may be two or three hundred items making up the twenty-eight million. And it was, a lot of it was COVID and safety discussions. Also, you know, security is a huge priority when we talk about each line item. The next two are huge too. Basically, protection of your assets in the building, so the envelope itself, if there's any issues with, we know you've done huge roofing projects, so that's great. There may be other window issues and or masonry issues that we want to take care of in the envelope. End of the lifespan, mechanical and electrical, those are really, I think, some of the things Rich is talking about where it's, it's almost asked to be done or we're going to be in trouble in a few years with some failures of equipment and then it becomes an emergency which we don't want.
So Ted, just to add to that, so we had the roof project, it was about a seventeen point eight million dollar project where we did the windows in the elementary school. And we absolutely waited till the last moment when our roof was leaking to get that done. And we had other additional work that we didn't do that could have been probably considered earlier. But we didn't have enough money to do that, the HVAC units, remember? So we fixed, put on a beautiful new roof and then Lynn's elementary school was still like leaking and people were still getting phone calls about it because the maintenance wasn't there. And the, some of these issues that they're talking about, the end of lifespan, those are the things that we have to take care of now or they're going to end up costing us more money down the line in repair, in minor repairs. I've had an emergency project every single year since I started here. So we want to try to avoid those things.
We want to try to get ahead of that.
Yeah, we want to try to get ahead of the game and start, you know, really making sure that, you know, the, all of those things are bumped up.
And then this is, this is the program needs that we talked about that was kind of brought in, this whole picture to come up with that. That whole, that's kind of scope that we have today. This is the list, you can scroll, we can read down through this list if you'd like, it's a few pages. This is kind of the list of the priority ones that you have in front of you. If you want to go line by line tonight, we'd be glad to do that, but if you want to kind of absorb it, get in some information and feel free to reach back out to John and team and get any questions back to us. And again, they're priority ones today, just because of a small group that has kind of started the ball rolling, now we need to push that through.
Um, one more thing, in addition to that, there's always a list, typically every school has a list like this, like a crazy amount of money of lists of things that they have, that they can work off. Jordan's people can start plucking off some of these small things. And then in five years, when we have another building condition survey, we, that may be larger again, we'd be looking at different areas to improve. But that, this just helps us prepare and plan.
The VCS develops a roadmap of needs that are, you know, one, five, ten, fifteen years. You're never going to be able to do them all, but at least it gives you that map. And on top of that, you develop your program needs. And then from those two things, we start to see where they are, where do they overlap, where they, where they make good financial sense and where do they meet the priorities of taking the district forward?
I think most of you have seen that one of the large priorities we've heard ever since we've been out here and meeting every couple of weeks for most of this year is, is site and safety, security in the front of the building, also weight finding and identity of main entrances, safety of walkers, crossing of vehicles and pedestrians. So we took a, we took a look at this with our site designers and I think many of you have seen the concepts that came out of that. This is just a, basically an overlay on the aerial view of the campus to show what some of the ideas are. And right now, if you were to drill down into that list that we handed out, you would see that this is included currently in the priority ones from what we've heard is a very important aspect. And, you know, this can be piecemealed as well, you know, there's a lot of different ways to chop this up. But the way we've looked at it is it makes the most sense efficiency-wise to do it all at once for the front of the school. So just some of the main aspects of things we're looking at, and again, as Rich mentioned, none of this stuff is baked in yet. It's kind of a placeholder for cost. And if we get to the point where we do pass a referendum and a vote, we would have many, many meetings to resolve hundreds of details to this design. But right now, what we have is kind of trying to improve some of the site circulation from end to end for safety with crosswalks, raised, raised areas for crossing, the main roads for safety of the kids, expansion of the parking back here for athletics. Because one of the things we identified, our site engineers identified, is that you've got a ton of parking up here, but some of the needs are more back in the end. So why expand this and keep that and just have a sea of asphalt? So one of the ideas is to expand parking here, reduce parking up here and create a, basically an open green space in the front, which is going to be a nicer approach for the public and take away some of that feel of, of the hard surfaces and then put the parking where it's needed. So that's, that's a major kind of concept. Also, still having some visitor parking here, creating, you can kind of see a red dash line, which would be sort of a safety walk all the way from end to end of the campus. Redesigning the parking here, creating better turning lanes and safety maneuvering for the buses to get across in and out. Because we've, we've actually come out and watched the pick up and drop off times and seen sort of the ballet. Some of the issues that are going on. Moving this drive a little bit further away from this intersection, we think is a, is a good move safety-wise. You will see that we have a concept here that's still being under review and discussion for an additional entrance there. We have to do additional study on that, but it's an idea to create an entrance here that would be closer to your main entry to the high school. With that, we also have the idea concept back here of another drop off loop. And that ties into a concept of separating bus drop off and parent drop off into two loops, creating a new main entrance over here. And this doesn't show it, but we would move some of these site amenities out of this loop. We don't want to mix the playground with a new drop off. So that didn't quite get rendered on this plan, but that's what we would do if we went ahead with this design.
So one of the, one of the other key things is that as you start increasing pavement in a, in a, on a site, there's a process you'll start hearing in a speaker prop called SEAKER, which is where the state environmental, you do an assessment of the property. What are you doing, what are the impacts? So by expanding pavement here, we've taken away green space. By bringing back green space here, that offsets, offsets, offsets those calculations. At the end of the day, if you, if you decrease green space and increase hard surface, there's a penalty for it. You have to do things for mitigating that, that loss of, of green space and water, so we've got to build that retention. Those are one of the things we're trying to avoid, so those are some of the things that we're also looking at. We, again, it's focusing on the control, the separation of bus and, and parent drop off and public ways and really trying to do that, but reimagining the front at the same time. Any questions on the site while we're looking at it?
With some of the changes you have here in regards to parking, you know, and the green space and that, is there an estimate on like changes in number of spaces available?
Yep, go ahead. Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I was going to mention, I don't know the exact counts, but I know that our site designer, what they were going for was at least equal or maybe five percent higher. That's where they are right now. We would study that, of course, you don't want to build your asphalt for. Um, you don't wanna build your asphalt for the three biggest events of the year, but at the same time, you need a good blend so you can handle most of the, of the, of the parking needs. Um, I don't think we heard anything when you have way, way, way less parking than you need. So what we wanted to do is just make sure that we at least accommodate what we have now or increase it just a little bit. So that's where it is right now.
Those are things that we still have to kinda find in those numbers, see where they are over this next, over this year. We can track some of those things, look at your some, some of your bigger events and see what impact.
So we're gonna roll through, um, a few slides here that show you some of the areas we're impacting. And, you know, right now, again, nothing's set in stone, but you did create a priority one and priority two that you have in front of you right now. And that's represented on the floor plan for each building here as different colors. So our priority ones are in blue and our priority twos are in green. So you can see in both phases, if, you know, if it did end up going that way, we're hitting a, a large percentage of the building. Um, in the priority ones, we've got, um, key projects that were given to us or told to us or we, we identified for the gym. Um, the cafeteria, kitchen, stage renovation area is, is in blue right here. Um, these two blue areas represent a, um, concept of redesign of the main office. So the idea that the main office could move over here and this could get reallocated to classrooms. Um, that would go in conjunction with that drop off loop that you saw before, where you could have a parent drop off out here and then the main office would move. So that's kind of the concept of the phase one and then a redesign of the bathrooms in the back, um, for supervision that we heard when we went to the elementary school. So that's a snapshot really of, of the priority ones for the elementary school, um, in the building, not including the site. These are just little concept, um, vignettes of the cafeteria kitchen area. Some of the things we're hearing and budgeting for is the kitchen hasn't been touched in a long time and would get fully renovated. Um, redoing the serving lines, um, perhaps creating a focus entrance way coming down the hallway here. So that's a move of the door. Um, the idea of lowering the stage, we've talked about a few times to make the seating more flexible. So this represents a stage, um, that would come down to the level basically and, and become flexible seating, uh, for the elementary school. And then just to tie into the, the food pantry presentation from earlier, um, we did talk about that and that would, you know, we would incorporate that into the design, I think it's over here right now. But, you know, we have the opportunity to make changes to that, expand it if needed, whatever that program would require. We could make it part of this, um, redesign. And then the main office here, if we did move it, would get renovated into classrooms, so that's what the blue shows. And we know that the pantry is being, obviously, when you start having other agencies push in and there's some criteria requirements that are happening, so we wanna try to look forward and plan the right space so that you don't have those problems as we start moving along. This is just a block concept of the main office, if it was to move, we would have a new security entrance on that end. Um, we have to reallocate space for all the main office functions and nurse. So it just shows that block of space getting redesigned.
There, there's some unique things that we found as we got to know the buildings. This actually, and we haven't found all the earlier drawings, but at some point, this actually had some concepts that had office at least in mind. There was a vestibule laid out, we're digging around out there in the site, we know that it's, it's got a covered canopy. It looks like it at one point may ever, should've had something. Yep, it really, it really offers that. And as we started looking at the separation of, of moving these two functions apart, you look at, do you move your buses, do you move your students, and then you start looking at the building and some of the other things you wanted to do. Um, one of the hurdles with where we are right now is that the students, it's great, you drop them off, you're at this spot, the curb's right here, but the door is way down there. So that's where we got people stopping their car, getting out of their car, walking up to those doors. By moving her onto this side, we've reduced that distance, bring the cars in a little bit closer and hopefully help with some of that congestion that started. You also see the starting, the development of, of vestibule, the secure three point, you know, roughly three points of stop. You want people to come up to the building, you want them to be able to get into the building, you want them to stop and have somebody from the office be able to see them, observe them, allow them into the next space and then talk to them again. And then you're in the controlled office where somebody can come and get them or move them. So those are the things we'll talk about as we look at entry and control over your office space to get that secure entry points.
So the, the high school, again, the blue is the, is what we have right now is the priority one snapshot today. Um, we're affecting a lot of classrooms with cabinetry and, and finish upgrades, you can see around the perimeter of the building. Part of the concept that we're excited about talking, um, in these committee meetings this year is the whole approach to the high school and the, if we do the site design, kind of the wayfinding and bringing people in, the public, um, visitors, uh, to the building, um, with a new identity in the front, um, possibly some new green space to, uh, open it up a little bit, less, less paved area um, for identity for the campus and the district. And then with this design right here that we've been talking about, we really redesigned the entrance to the school with, uh, redesign of the main office here for safety and security, also, uh, moving some offices um, and, and a, and a large lobby, uh, renovation and the auditorium. So that's really a big entrance sequence that would get changed from the way it is today, starting at the perimeter of the site, at the outside road and coming right into the, the main lobby, um, for district pride and, um, identity. We've also got some projects in the pool, um, some of the, um, classrooms around the back in the fitness center. You'll see in the green, some of the things we're talking about possibly doing in the future. Again, it depends on where we end up with our committee meetings, um, some library upgrades, um, and then, uh, the, uh, tech, tech area in the back and locker room systems.
So some of the stuff we learned, uh, is how the space is being used right now. We did kind of utilization, looking at the building, we got more to do that on that. But in this area in the front here, there's quite a bit of space right now that's just kind of open space, not really working. And one of the things we've, we've learned talking with, with, uh, the high school administration is that upon arrival, there's really not a place for students to go. There, we're really looking for how to control them in that, that small gap there between bus drop off or parent drop off and when classes start. So by repurposing the space that's out front here, also taking advantage of an area in the boiler room up at the second level, previous projects moved out the old boilers and brought in newer, more modern. That's opened up a, a second story space, but we're gonna be able to, the possibility to reclaim that space, bring you in a centrally located gang toilet room. So you have that opportunity for the odd, for the gym, for your major events. And then along in this area here, you'll see in the future plans, some repurposing of the space that's out here. And how can we reorganize that so that we reclaim it and utilize it for something, but still offer what we're looking for up front for identity branding and just great space for collaboration of students and, and public.
So this is that concept Rich was just talking about of, of our early, early, early concepts for what we could do here. But, you know, if the district did wanna go forward with something like this, we think there's opportunity to repurpose some of the space right out here for a guidance suite. Um, the boardroom and district office stay. This vestibule stays, but we create a second vestibule over here, which would be the entrance secure vestibule. Um, redesign the main office for safety and security, the auditorium and stage gets renovated. And then, as Rich mentioned, if we can reclaim some of the space in the boiler room for bathrooms, we can take the bathrooms that are out right here, right out, open it up with some glass, have some, uh, district pride, uh, in the lobby, have some charging stations, a bunch of, uh, interactive screens and really create a nice welcoming entrance way for the community to utilize this entire, you know, sequence of coming in from the road and, and into a, a public space where there may be a, a performance or an auditorium that has a companion event lobby right outside.
It's, it's, it's opportunity for fun. There's great opportunity for when you have your large groups in here, but it's also a good breakout space where students reward. We can sit, you know, we're always looking for places to reward young students or them trying to get team collaborative events. But when you put them out in an area like this, it's great because we have a lot of administrative people that are moving around. So even though they're out in an area, it's still public, they can still be controlled and supervised and still give them a little bit of that freedom.
You'll see it here on our priority one list that we've been talking a lot all year about the windows of this building. So we wanted to give you a, a quick, you know, what does that mean? It's a huge project, I mean, there's tons of windows and you'll see out in front, it's an identity thing. It's, uh, it can be a safety and security thing, it can be a, a visual cue to the, to the public, the panels are included. So we've got all these panels around the glass, in years past, they reduced the amount of glass, um, for energy efficiency. So this is what you have right now, and then we just did a really quick view on the next slide of what it could be. Um, so this is a wide open project that'll really change the look of the school. We're showing windows right now, this is the way it used to look like, um, originally, uh, with a lot more glass. Um, that's totally up to, um, study in the future of what we do there between solid and, and clear. But, um, this mimics what was there originally and because of new glass techniques and thermal glass and the ability for us to do, um, films and different things, we can create a very energy efficient window panel there and let a lot of nice natural light into the building that was taken away when they reduced the amount of glass back into the last project.
I think the building is of, anything over fifty years is considered, considered historic. And as it's considered historic, we have to go back, we have to go to SHIPPO. And SHIPPO is, uh, the state historic preservation organization and they have, say, all we do. So this is kind of, uh, you know, just our preliminary thinking of what they may be coming back to. A lot of times they're telling us, yeah, it was designed in this timeframe, you're no longer that style of architecture. So this kinda goes back and mimics some of that. But in the end, we'll work to navigate and get to the point where as a, as a collaborative effort, it's a building, cause this is huge, this reimages the whole front of this building. And it's a great opportunity for district branding, different, you know, how do you wanna see it, where do you wanna approach and things like that? So we, we really think this is gonna be an exciting change.
Uh, this is just our slide, we'll keep showing you, I think we've already shown it to you a couple of times. But it, it shows how we get more into the details as we go along. Right now, we're trying to get broad brush concepts of what you wanna do, what are the big ideas? What do we need to budget for those ideas and what makes sense for you budget wise for, for a project? Um, once we get finally into a vote, then we're gonna come down here and we don't ever want anybody to think that once the vote happens that, um, the, the project just goes ahead as is and there's no input. There's actually more input and more focus on details down into here. And we have, you know, on a project of this size, we might have anywhere from six, six months to a year of design. And half of, at least half of that is gonna be back and forth with district groups and user groups and, and the administration to focus those projects into what they need to be and really refine each area of, of the project. And then once, once we get through all that, we'll get to construction at the end and we'll be boots on, probably with bricks and mortar. And our last slide, thanks for being so patient. This is just kind of a really, really rough timeline of some things we've done. Um, again, we've had feedback, uh, we have the ability to present a list to you in November, December. Um, the key to this timeline is whether we vote, you know, we're showing a vote in February. If there's a vote in February, if there's a vote in March, if there's a vote in May, if there's a vote next fall. Whenever that vote happens and everybody's comfortable with this project, uh, because it is your project, um, we just want you to be aware of the fact that before that vote happens, approximately two months ahead of time, so I'm saying February for the vote and whatever month that is, come back two months. Um, we need to really know what the project is, um, and what you wanna do, first of all. And then the other thing is we need to finish that SEACR process, which is that environmental review process. And that's a state regulation and, and that whole SEACR process was, um, born out of, um, people doing projects and not looking at environmental impacts. And what they found is they budgeted for a big site project like you have, they didn't study the site and then they realized, well, they have a buried oil tank or they're messing up a wetland and all of a sudden you've got five hundred thousand dollars of extra work to do. So the SEACR process was created to avoid that, to look at the site very carefully if you're doing site work and to make sure there's no surprises. So that SEACR process can take months to complete, so we need to complete that two months before and then, um, the board would actually take action on that and approve the SEACR process and then we would, we would go for a resolution for the vote. Um, so we still have to target and, and verify that vote date, but there are some key steps as we go along the way. The other thing I wanted to point out on this timeline is that the process takes a lot of time and we want you to be comfortable with where we are once we, once we go for the final scope list. And then after the vote, there's a lot of work. So we're not gonna see like, uh, if everybody's excited about the cafeteria project and kitchen at the elementary school, that's not gonna happen for roughly, probably a year and a half to two years after the vote. Um, there's a significant design phase and then once our design is done, we have to send it to the state for code review and that can take three to four months. Then we have to bid out to contractors, get contractors on board, create contracts, get insurance and all that. So all that takes, um, up to two years after the vote. So, um, just so you're aware of some of the timelines that are happening before we actually get projects done. And then the project might take you a, a year and a half to finish.
So, so the immediate date down here that's important, as, as I'm drawing here, is next week. Um, the kickoff really to the, to get out there and outreach out, and it's already here. This is, this is when it starts to get exciting, you know? The, the whole hopes is that we can get people talking about it, get that energy out there so everybody understands something great's gonna happen here. You know, we really need to, there's certain responsibilities that we have, that we have to take care of, but as we're taking care of those, there's other opportunities. We're also gonna talk about stuff that's not so fun when we start talking about the cost. You know, people have to understand it, it has to come from somewhere, so we'll, we'll have those real conversations. What do things cost, what are they moving towards, uh, what are we going back to? Uh, we, we hope that we're able to build the, a, a good group of consistent members that'll come to this facility group and really help us with that information, not only our, the staff here that has already been fantastic, keep moving that along, but also some other people that'll come in and, and offer suggestions and thoughts. But at the end, what we need to do is, is talk to them and, and help everybody understand, you come to a collaborative end with a recommendation back to, to this group. Uh, ultimately, this is the group that's gonna make those decisions and have to go through and look at these priorities and see which ones they are. So we, you know, we look forward to this process. There's no silver bullet that's gonna say we're gonna have it done in two meetings or five meetings. Um, we think that there's some good data that we've collected that we'll share with the group as we start. But it's always a great process and we always learn new things along the way and have different ideas. So what we're showing today and what we might be coming back with or periodically bringing back to you could look a whole lot different. But this is a starting point and, um, you know, we look forward to the process. And as we move along, uh, hopefully we have some of you join us and, and are part of that, uh, facilities committee also.
Uh, at one point, maybe, Jordan, did you hit us with a really big number on track work that needed to be done? Like, didn't we hear something about a million dollars?
Well, you could get into, you know, depending on what we do, you could get, we had some, the number, we go to eight lane, it was like.
Uh, it's, it's on the list and it's in our database and it's a priority list and we can talk with the facilities group.
So there's an extra lane, I get that, but wasn't there some like real maintenance, like this thing was gonna fall apart if we didn't do something or?
Um, yes, it's something that we have to address. Um, we actually pushed that back to step two with the idea, or the phase two, with the idea that we could do another repair on it and get another couple of years.
So we brought out, you know, we've got some, uh, the person that's maintained in the past, we've reached out to them, we've worked with them on a lot of projects and said, alright, you know, where are we really at and can we put it off? Cause there's some big decisions with that. If you want it where it sits, there's a cost associated with just repairing and redoing the surface the way it is. But if you truly wanna go to an eight lane track and make that kind of a significant change, you're rebuilding everything. So if you're going to rebuild everything, you know, some of the conversations we had looking at the overall site is, if you're gonna rebuild it all, would it stay there? Would it make sense to be in that spot or would it make sense to be situated somewhere else on, in that, in that field or in that area? So, you know, there's a, there's a varying range of numbers. I think we have four or five different number placeholders depending on what, you know, what you could possibly do in there.
So in addition to that, if we added two more lanes, we're very close to the property line back there with that. So it'd be looking at whether that is something we wanna do. I know we discussed that, but, but also like, we, we know that that's not ideal, the location, because of the parking situation. So is there something, if we're gonna ever do that, let's just do it right.
I just remember the presentation we received about the football field and the track.
Yep.
Those were the two things, but the football field's not even on any priority list and the track is on the second priority.
So we, going back, Jordan had it resurfaced, what, two? So we, going back, Jordan had it resurfaced, what, two years ago we did that? Jeff might know.
Further than, they cleaned it last year, but I think it was...
I think it was the year before that, yeah. So that was before we knew that it could be done again. I don't know about the football field, exactly what needs to be done to that. I mean...
That's kind of exactly what you guys were saying. We can move, you know, if we decide that that track is a priority one, that can be moved in. But, you know, at the same time, if we're going to stay within that budget, something else has to be done. The thinking was, for this purpose, was that we, when the engineers looked at it and they were thinking, we can get a couple more years out of it if we just did some repairs, got it through for another couple of years. At some point, yes, we're going to have to go in there and do some major work and really...
So part of the other part of that is, we're doing a lot of site work, which is not amiable in the same manner. It's incidental cost. So we only have a certain percentage of the project we can spend on that. So if we're going to do the work upfront and address safety, then we can't also at the same time spend four million dollars on the track. You know what I mean? So looking at these things, is that a priority? If it is, then we can talk about taking that away and adding something back to that. But you have to spend so much money to have a percentage of that allocated as your, in your incidental. And your incidental includes all of your architect's fees, all of your construction manager fees, any extra fees that are included in that. So that number actually gets whittled down even smaller when you're looking at a project in total, because that's the entire project. The other thing that I want to add in terms of financing and costs, as we've kind of discussed before, we don't want our debt to fall off and not have something to go back. We're looking at almost a three-year timeframe from the time we started this, we are free for an architect, to the time when everything will be done. It'll be three to four years. In that period of time, we're having debt fall off. And so looking at that as an opportunity for us to add on to the projects that, A, some of them we know need to be done, and two, what are the priorities and programs in the district? So those are the things I've been looking at as we get closer and we discuss dollars. That will be looked at very closely.
One of the things you guys have done is, that's a huge asset for you, is done the capital reserve. So you have some to offset that share already. So you're thinking ahead, moving ahead. So you have that opportunity to do that. So that also goes into play, you know, of where all those falls.
Yeah, as board members, you know, we don't, obviously didn't work in this building the way, you know, the rest of these people do. So it's hard for us to say, you know, what is priority one, other than the things that we hear in this boardroom that's presented to us and we try to remember what we've heard.
Right.
You talk a lot about entrances. I'm sure you work with some sort of a security consultant. From time to time, somebody comes in here and says, we need to have a security consultant go through this whole place. I'd hate to do something that three years later, some firm out of Ohio comes in and says, you got to redo this whole thing, a lounge next to an entrance. For instance, that, to me, I just sort of wonder, is that a great idea? So I would just hope that we put a lot of thought into all this entrance work and then somebody a few years later is going to come in and say, what were you thinking here?
Along with that, so it's really, that's, it's a great conversation because you can go as far as you want with that, you know? And at some point, you have to look at, we've had these conversations all the way up to state level. We want it to be inviting, we want to welcome people in, we want it to be a main entrance and that. So there's some things that we could do to help with that. You know, when we do the window design and we, you know, you don't want to just wall it all off and put a metal door in front of your building. So there's some products that we can apply and incorporate into the design. First thing is breaking up the windows into small panels, putting either pipes of glass or films that are applied to the glass. There's opportunities for tinting, a number of things like that that you can do and apply to those to help increase it. But that's why through this group, some of those conversations are exactly what we're going to have. How do you, you know, it's pretty easy. We know that during your general arrival, we want people to be able to get into a vestibule. We do not want them running free in the building. We want to stop them, we want to be able to see them through a visual and move through those steps. But then there's the other things like your daily activity, how's the building presented? And then in the evening, we've already had some early conversations with high schools specifically. How do we coordinate off areas? You know, when you look at this footprint and you have this grand entrance and bringing it in, we don't want people, you know, you know, when somebody's in the auditorium and they got the little ones, they take them out, just let them run the halls. We won't be able to keep them in those areas. So I don't think there's, there's a lot of safety, people have come and sent a lot of stuff, but there's no, and Oakfield, Alabama Central Schools has to decide what works for them. What do you feel is the right thing for here? And we're going to work with you through the design process and we'll bring in that information and share it with you. But that's a decision that, you know, we want to help you make and work through that process. There's lots of stuff that you guys have already implemented with your current security system and the expansions that you're talking about and moving through. So all of those things are all being overlaid and looked at and we'll continue to talk about it. So hopefully, you know, hopefully we can answer those questions as we go. But at some point, we're going to come to you with, whether it's a committee recommendation or thoughts that we have, looking for some feedback back on where's that balance? You know, what do you want to see when you drive up to this building? You know, it's a legit question. You know, if you don't want to see that, there's things we can do to, you know, limit it, still make it look open. But we also want people to be able to see natural light. You want to have that area where, you know, kids feel like they can see the outside, is it skylights? You know, one of the things we talked about is incorporating skylights down that hallway just to bring some more natural light in to help with that. So that's what we look to try to push through this design process and we'll have those conversations. That's a great point.
I don't know when it'll come out, the committee meeting next week, but I hear more permanent bathrooms back there towards the football track area. I don't know if that's in the plans or not.
So one of the things we've looked at is that there is a tremendous amount of locker room space on both sides of this building that are being utilized in less effective manner. Or, you know, just utilizes more storage, things like that, but not laid out to, they weren't laid out in the original to give that kind of exposure. So they've already been looked at as opportunity for that relative to the space, to the access to the site. Unfortunately, in this scheme right now, they're often in phase two. Depending on where that falls in the ultimate priorities, it could come up. But yeah, you have, you have great opportunity here, you have terrific entrances. You know, we talked about the parking along in here and the expansion of the parking is going to allow access to the pool area. It would allow access to tech and art areas if they wanted to and music. But you still have control over your building. So those are all things that we're looking forward to.
Keep in mind on athletic bathrooms, we run into this a lot where what Rich is talking about is repurposing existing part of your school that may not be fully utilized in the locker rooms. If we put that bathroom in here, you're basically fully amiable with it. It's renovated within a school footprint. If we take that same thing and put it out here as a separate building, we have to bring utilities to it and everything else, you could be talking two, three, four hundred thousand dollars, fully uneatable, all local share. So it's just something to think about. I mean, you obviously want the bathrooms close to the fields, but at the same time, it's a huge cost compared to renovating existing building into an exterior bathroom.
You spent fifteen million dollars and you put a bathroom like that, is what I could hear from the community. We put a bathroom out back, we spent fifteen million dollars. That's, I mean, that's, you're talking about what do we need, windows, things like that? What does the community want and a balance of the two?
Yeah, exactly. Take the needs, the wants, and then what can we forward? And when you overlay those things, that's that area we're looking for, right there in the middle. And it's trying to craft and get everybody to that same point.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks for your time.
Thanks. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Hopefully next week.
Yeah.
Great.
I need approval of the minutes. Be resolved with the minutes of September seventeen, twenty nineteen. Need to be approved and get a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Do we have any visitor requests?
Yeah.
Warrants internal claims be resolved after the bills pay for the nine nineteen, ten three warrants and internal claims order reports be approved.
Similar.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Be resolved with the treasurer's report for September twenty nineteen be approved.
Removed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? First area of the policy, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, this policy needs to be enacted come January of next year. Really, it's just a promotional type of deal so that students that are, that will be eligible and can pre-register to vote, that we provide the opportunities in the high school for them to do that, which we currently do. It's just actually a brand new policy that just came out. So I recommend that you approve it as written because we are following it. It's just a policy that the state requires now that all school districts have.
Any questions, or John, we can approve it tonight as is if we're comfortable with it? Yes, sir?
No, it seems pretty straightforward. I mean, it's social studies twelve, right?
Yes, there's opportunities for our students currently right now in the past that have the opportunity, if they want to pre-register to vote, they can.
Is it just in social studies twelve or is it...
No, it's actually the participation government class.
Okay.
But basically, school districts need just to provide the opportunity for students to be able to pre-register and vote. We do have a staff member that does that with the kids.
I want to move forward.
Yeah.
You actually hand delivers the information to the, yeah.
Yeah, so about motion to approve policy number seventy four seventy as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Cool.
So I just have a brief presentation on the veterans exemption for you. So... So a couple of months ago, we talked about the veterans exemption. I just want to go over it again. Next month, we will be having at five thirty the meeting for everybody to come to and give any of their input on that. But just a little overview of the information. It was enacted in nineteen eighty-four for municipalities, towns and counties. In nineteen ninety-four, they added additional levels to it. And then in two thousand thirteen, they allowed schools to opt in. And you were supposed to opt in by January of two thousand fourteen. The Oakfield did not pass it. They actually looked at it in two thousand fourteen, decided not to pass it. That includes three different levels of exemption, wartime, disabled and combat. And to be qualified, you just have to fill out forms with the assessor. So in May, I presented, John, with a memo just showing, and you guys all have access to that, the cost to the district, taxpayers, really. And what, what would it really do? It'd be similar to the stamp project. So we're looking at reducing the amount of value and passing off the taxes to the rest of the district, really. So, so the taxpayers would then pay a slightly higher tax rate and be allowing the exemption for the veterans and whatever they qualify for. So the next steps, like I said, the public hearing at five thirty in the community room before our next meeting to pass that. So if you look at the memo that I gave, John, there's a little, at the bottom, it just shows what the exemption limits are. And the majority of school districts passed C. Here's the list of districts. And the only three that have disapproved or not addressed the issue are Oakfield, DeRoya, and Pavilion. So everybody else has the exemption approved for their school district that's up there. So it would roughly be passing along if we passed the lowest limits or the lowest exemption to taxpayers. It would cost everyone else in the district thirty-five hundred roughly dollars, spread over the entire taxpayers base. So about a fifty-eight cent increase. Per thousand, sorry. On the rate. So we will be asking you to approve or deny that on the next, at the next meeting. So I just wanted to make sure you guys all have the information and we're updating on what to estimate work that comes. Couple other items I have for you tonight are just ongoing items. So in my administrative content in the board docs, there's the ten largest taxpayers that there are. I also have to get to you next meeting, it's upcoming, the corrective action plan for the extracurricular audit and the regular audit. So you approve those audits at the last meeting. They have to be submitted to the state by today. That was all completed. The last thing is any of those recommendations, we have to follow up on them. So I will be doing that in the next month and then preparing a report for you that you all have to approve. And then I submit that to the state. I have some ideas, especially for the extracurricular audit that are going on. Next month, you'll also get a budget calendar. We're still waiting for the finalized dates of everything. So I want to make sure I can be the most up to date. But that will be starting next month. We will be starting those discussions as the administrative team next month. Additionally, I have the reserve fund plan that we need to look at. As I, I can resend you out what we approved three years ago, but I want to revisit that and look at where we are currently at and where we want to be. There's also another reserve that we can add, the mix. If you guys are all interested, I know I certainly am. It's, we have an employee retirement system reserve, looking at the teacher's retirement system reserve for when the rates fluctuate. At one point, within the last ten years, the rate was at least eight percent higher than the teachers. So looking at that and seeing if that's something we want to add. And then the final two items that I have for you, long range financial planning, estimating out where we're going to be at and really looking at, I mean, the capital process is a great thing to have, but we have now the two percent tax cap estimating what our capital exclusion is. It's very important here that we have our capital exclusion be maintained consistency or we go into that negative area. We don't want to have a negative tax gap. So just looking at that.
When do we run that risk with that negative tax gap?
When we have, so we have the capital exclusion.
A couple of years from now?
Yes, so we have more expense with a capital fund than we get in aid. So what I'm trying to do is reverse that. So we're getting more aid and then we have capital expense. And the only way to do that is to have a project and have less expense on your debt than you have aid coming in. And that's done in a couple of ways. That's done partially by your reserve, having a set of reserves and really planning it well. So our last project, we had that two million dollar premium because we went through DASNY Financing, which is the state of New York. They pool hundreds of millions of dollars of bonds. So you get a really, really good rate and you end up getting a premium on it. So for us to get a two million dollar premium, that was like a free two million dollars essentially for us. So it's looking at these things that we can do to turn us around so that we won't be in a situation where we have to make a decision quick. Because as you can see, it takes three to four years to go from project planning to having debt. So in that timeframe, if you're not planning for it, we could have, we are going to have debt fall off at some point. It's just next year and then two years out is our bigger one that's falling off. So we just want to make sure we're looking at that. One final thing that you guys all need to be aware of. The ESSA reporting and transparency reporting, that is requiring us to report to the state expenditures and budget by building level. And the state hasn't given us any information on how we're going to be doing that in the next couple of months for them. But then we will have to be having to do that again next August for our actual expenditures. So those are things I'm looking at. They may change the way teachers are coded, the way our supplies are listed. So they might mess with our budget codes a little bit. But if we do it now, then going forward, we'll be all set up to make those reports. Does anybody have any other questions? I listen to things that are...
Justin. Slides, you got it. No, I'm not. I just know what you're talking about.
All right. Thank you, Nicole.
I just want to congratulate the three new Hall of Fame inductees this past week. Daniel Hopkins of seventy, Linda Potter of seventy-two, and Kim Woolcott of seventy-two. I was able to meet with them, be part of the assembly last Thursday and have a luncheon with them. And I have to tell you, it's great. It's great to bring these former students back to hear what their life experiences are. And then they also had some assemblies with our students, a question and answer period. And it was, you know, great having them within the district. Jeff took them on a building... Jeff took them on a building tour that I went on and it's just, it's just great, the pride that they have in this district. And it's nice to have them recognized, so that was, that was great. And then obviously, this month is Board Appreciation Month, so in front of you, I just have a token of my appreciation. As a former board member myself, I know that it's not an easy thing to do and sometimes it's a very thankless job. So thank you, wear that with pride and, you know, I don't know if you want to wear those to board meetings. You may, that might be looked to, you know, solidarity. But thank you for that, so.
I'll people believe.
So that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Let's see, two new business, be resolved, the items eight two through eight five be approved via consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Same.
Second.
Any discussion on anything there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes? Communications, everything that's, I think it's just.
Those are audit reports, too.
I've got audit reports and anybody's welcome with that. Yeah, anything would like? Okay, on the discussion round table, I don't think anything was submitted.
I used to have one thing, it's the feedback on what John just said. We had the Hall of Fame Committee Dinner and there was a forgetful emcee that night. He forgot to thank Mr. Peterson for being there. Not only was Mr. Peterson there for setup, he stayed for the whole thing, didn't eat too much, so that was good. And then he stayed after to help us take everything down. So thank you, Mr. Peterson. We'll have to get the emcee of the program later.
We spoke, obviously, to recognize me. I was happy to be there and lay low in the shadows, that's kind of my style anyways.
But thanks for being there. I think Mr. Montroy was there a couple of years ago, I think. He sat next to a really good-looking guy, I can't remember who it was, but ended with me. But it's nice to have, it was mentioned by a lot of people that it was nice to have the administrative presence there, so thank you.
Yeah, it was great that you could watch out, I'm seeing.
Thanks.
Maybe, you know, our closing remarks are after everybody's left, but I went to the Dick Pink game fundraiser the other night and the volleyball team does a great job with that. That was a lot of fun and just congratulations to everything they do to raise money. With that, is there anything else?
FFA banquet Saturday.
October twenty-sixth is our FFA banquet at the Alba Fire Hall. And it sounds like we're going to be a sellout for that, so that's going really well. Okay, so committee reports, is anybody met? Health and wellness, kind of, code of conduct, you guys are wrapped up with that, right? Okay. And personnel, be resolved, the items eleven two through eleven six be approved via consent agenda?
Same.
Second.
Any discussion, anything there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes? Executive session, be resolved, Board of Education enter executive session at seven thirty-four for the purpose of discussing heavy mitigation. Do we have a motion?
Same.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes?